Anyone we can check with to make sure we're.
Can you hang on? Alyssa, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Wonderful.
All right, so we can be heard. We are ready, so and it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Town of Commissioners order on Tuesday, January 3rd, 23rd, oh my gosh, 2024. Would you do roll call for us, Clark Hostman?
Will do. Commissioner Burks. Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner La.
Here.
Commissioner Pravat.
Here.
Town Attorney Karen Ruff.
Here.
Police Chief David Burke. Public Works Director Donald Bond.
Here.
John Hudson, town clerk here. Give the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to our review and approval of the agenda. So we have the agenda on the screen and in front of you. I would like to propose one addition after we get through our reports. I'd like to give our new team of attorneys a chance to speak with us and introduce themselves. Is anyone averse to that? Great, we'll add that. Are there any other changes in the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to. Do you want to read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five consent agenda, six reports, seven old business, A, Resolution 2024-01 Budget Calendar Board Vote, B, Annual Event Calendar Board Vote, C, Town Meeting Schedule Board Vote, D, Town Holiday Schedule Board Vote, E, New Business, A, Resolution 2024-02 Retirement Plan Board Vote, N, Administrative Updates, 10, Public Comments, 11, Preliminary Approval of Next Meeting Agenda, and 12, Motion to Go into Roll Session.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There is one change to a report in the consent agenda on page 12, food truck permit. I was calculating that with the ones that were at the Christmas event, but it's actually one, not five. So there's one outside of there. So I'd just like to, with that change, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Is there a second?
Check it.
Would you call the roll?
Will do. Commissioner Colbert. I mean, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner La.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will move on to reports. And I will say, at this time, the board is going to work out the liaison toward committees on the 3rd when we have a goal-setting session as well. That's a special meeting on February 3rd at 10:00 a.m. And what we'll do is if public wants to provide input on the goals, we'll give you two minutes each before we start the meeting. But once the board is in discussions, there will not be public comment at that meeting just prior to, and then there will be more time for public comment when we come back on February 13th and discuss the goals in a work session. So that said, we don't believe there's an Arts Council report. They have not been meeting. Chief Burke, do you have a cert report?
They did their monthly meeting in March last month.
Commissioner Colbert, do you have a report from Economic Development Work Group?
Yes, so we met on this past Friday to continue working on the Town Sustainable Community Renewal Application, which is due in February. We made a lot of headway on that with the team that was present. Have a follow-up meeting scheduled for the 31st, which will hopefully finalize that application. Clark Hostman, you sent me the names of a couple of people who are interested in the committee to reach out to, so they're on my list to engage with. And hopefully after we get through the application phase, we'll get into the actual work.
I know that the Events Committee and the Green Team did not meet last month, so we can skip over those reports. With the Historic Committee, the chairperson, and I met with the state's representative for the Maryland 250 Celebration and were able to talk about that. They would really like to focus on doing something for the 250 Celebration and preparing for that. So that's what added that. And we will move on to a legislative update. I believe we have representatives from Greenwell, Jonathan Carpenter and Leslie Felice, who can give us an update about what's happening in Annapolis.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Can you hear me?
You can. How is it there in Annapolis?
I wanted to apologize because I'm just leaving Annapolis unexpectedly. But again, Jonathan Carpenter, I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget and what's looming and what we're dealing with. As I think most of you know, the state has, budget has come out. There was a $760 million deficit, structural deficit, that the governor and the legislature's dealing with. That's why we have been, again, constantly tempering our ass. However, they are moving forward and looking for ways to fund, you know, initiatives and essential programs. I will say that the legislature this year, unlike any other, and I've talked to folks who've been down here for 30 years, and I asked the question, have you ever seen this many bills in the first two full weeks of session? Because nobody has. Leslie and I, we had to cover four hearings, four different hearings last week in the first full week of session, unheard of. But we're thinking that as a, maybe they're trying to get work done prior to the end of session. So we've got a lot of legislation. I think already there's close to 1,000 pieces or 800 to 1,000 pieces of legislation that has already been introduced and have bill numbers. I know for a fact, I think it's like 500 in the House. So again, a lot of work is going right from the beginning, hitting the floor running. So again, the Greenwell team, again, appreciates it, appreciate you. We do not take it for granted the opportunity to actually be down here and be your representative. I know Leslie's going to talk about a few pieces of legislation that we're looking at. But again, the structural deficit is something that's a real thing for the state. State agencies were requested to cut, I think, like 10% of their budgets, if you can imagine. So again, stay tuned for more to come. But again, a lot of pieces of legislation are out, and we're out in the hallways constantly. So I'll turn it over to Leslie, and then hopefully we'll take any questions after. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just wanted to add some more to what Jonathan just said. As he mentioned, we've had over 800 bills introduced, and the deadline to submit your bills was last Friday. So we are going to see quite a few bills introduced in the next few weeks. Last year, we saw 3,000 bills. We might see more this year, but we'll continue to monitor and see if there's anything that could impact the town. When we do send the bill trackers, if you see something that you want us to monitor or look into, please let us know as soon as possible because we are seeing bill hearings scheduled much quicker this year. As Jonathan said, things are moving really quickly, so we want to get on things as soon as possible. There are a few bills we are monitoring as we speak. One being Senate Bill 14, which is a bill that would allow municipalities and counties to have a designation for tourism. And this would provide some tax incentives for any businesses coming into areas with this designation. So that's one we're keeping an eye on, and it has gotten support from MML. We are also monitoring any bills related to cannabis, more specific to zoning laws that they're doing. There are some bills we're expecting to see this year, so we want to just make sure we're keeping an eye on that in case it could impact you all. So that, those are some of the bills. There is also one, which is really quickly, House Bill 165. This is a bill that would impact counties and municipalities who are behind on their financial audits. It would impact them by allowing the comptroller to be able to take a percentage of police aid, highway user revenues, and any disparity grants the towns are receiving. So this is something that we are getting a lot of feedback on, so we're keeping an eye on and have made sure to be in communication with the mayor about this. But again, if there are any other bills that you want us to look at, please let us know because we are in the hallways and can quickly catch the legislators and ask any of your questions. So another thing I did want to speak on is our funding request for the town this year. We are working with Senator Watson and delegates Blafo, Taylor, and Holmes, who all are coming together and supporting the town's initiative for the road infrastructure project. So they did collectively put in a legislative bond initiative, and I am working with the town to get together the fact sheet for that. And once we get that submitted, we will be able to, and by we, I mean Jonathan and I and Ivan, we'll work with the senator and delegates to ensure that this is in the budget and that we can get as much of our requests as possible because, as Jonathan said, we do have a deficit. So it'll be very important for us to work with them to make sure we stay in the budget and stay in those conversations with the committees. So I will stop there. I know that was a lot of information, so I'll open it up to any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Greenwell? Are you not?
No question.
And Leslie's sending out. Are you sending that every week? I know it's only been two weeks, and you sent it every week, so probably the answer's yes. But the sheet with all the bills you're tracking?
Yes.
So if we see, if we look at that and see one, we want them to just let me know, and we can make sure that. All right, thank you, guys. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
We will let you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to Commissioner reports. And we'll start with my report. I want to start with, and they have probably, what is in Director, or will be in Director Bond's report next month as well, but Papco has been doing a bunch of different things about, around their streetlights. And so they're doing a streetlight survey where they've gone and surveyed each of our streetlights and seen what, whether it's on a pole or underground, what the light fixture is, what the bulb is, et cetera. And they are wanting our team to confirm all of those lights. I know that we've had certain concerns about lights, so I do want to, you know, mention this to the commissioners. So if you would like to be part of that process, so that you can put any notes about specific poles or wires or lights into that survey, please let me know. So that's going to be happening, and that'll help guide some of the stuff we want to do with regard to streetlights. And we had that meeting yesterday, I think, yeah. So I've attended the MML opening day reception in Annapolis, met with some of our legislators there. It was very packed, so it's really just a chance to make sure they saw our faces. We are meeting with the trail planning folks for the Chesapeake Beach Railway Trail Alternative. They've come up with a couple of alternatives, some more feasible than others, and they're going to start working on cost analysis on those. I'm also working with Prince George County Public Schools Transportation on some bus stop issues that our residents are having, and just trying to get those resolved. So we've been working with the new attorneys on the transition, working with the county and the state on letting concerns, and getting Better City looped back in for property standards and economic development tasks. I will turn it over to Commissioner Colbert.
A couple of quick items. I don't know, excuse me, meeting, which was the organizational meeting, but attended the downtown tree lighting at the beginning of December, so again, wanted to say thank you to everyone who was involved in putting that together, and of course, our town Santa for being present. Doing as best as possible. Also attended the MML opening day reception, got a little bit of face time with the representatives in our delegation, and as I mentioned, had the Economic Development Work Group meeting this past Friday, working on the Sustainable Communities Application, and also following up, continuing to follow up with DHTP on some of the outstanding reimbursement applications. So hopefully that will get wrapped up soon, even though it's been lingering for.
Thank you.
Well, I am working on some community initiatives and doing some research to see what would best fit the community, so that's all I have.
Sure. Pravat. It's okay.
I don't have.
You're just onboarding yourself.
Yeah. But I will say, my biggest thing right now is connecting with the Latini Dad group. They're trying to get their name changed officially and proposing back to MML. I know I've been shouted out a few times to meet in person, so I'm going to work that in my schedule.
Thank you. All right. Going back, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to do it after reports, and I got distracted. So apologies. So I am now going to introduce our town attorney. Attorney Karen Ruff is here, and she can introduce the rest of her firm if you can to then give a new attorney on board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Karen, well, Ruff is Levand Ruff. With us tonight is also my partner, Alyssa Levand, and virtually, I don't know if.
Yeah, I think we can see Alyssa on the screen.
And.
Oh, I think she just went over now. Yep, she's there now.
Also with us is Lynn Ward with our firm. So we wanted to say hello, to introduce ourselves, to thank you for choosing us as your town attorney, to tell you that we look forward to working with you. And Alyssa, is there anything you would like to add?
No, we are thrilled to be working with you. We've, as I think you saw during the process of selecting us, we each have decades of experience in municipal government. Municipalities are essentially all we do. We're so happy to have Lynn with us now. She has the same sorts of credentials and experience, and we're sure that she, you're going to be pleased with her addition to our team as well.
Anything you'd like to say?
I say, good evening. I am pleased to join you all this evening. Again, as Alyssa just said, I'm the newest member of the team. I'm a recent retiree from 15 years of in-house counsel for the city of Gathersburg, have also represented the city of Frederick for a number of years, as well as the towns of Middletown and Thurmont. So very experienced in municipal government, be happy to be working with you, and also very happy to be working with Alyssa and Karen.
Good, thank you for the opportunity tonight to meet. And if you have any questions for.
Okay. Yeah, we've.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. We are glad to have you on board. I think everyone's been really impressed with the work so far and how quickly you guys transitioned, so we appreciate that. We're excited to work with you too, Lynn. We haven't met yet, but I'm sure we will.
I would welcome that opportunity.
Okay, well, thank you so much, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night.
We will move on to Old Business, and I am going to turn it over to Clark Hostman for Resolution 2024-01, which is our budget calendar.
Resolution 2024-01, session regular town meeting, dated January 23rd, 24. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Marlboro, establishing a budget calendar for the fiscal year 2025 budget process. So this calendar basically lays out our budget process, starting, of course, tonight. You guys are approving Resolution 2024-01, and it actually walks us through up until, of course, the start of the budget, which will be Monday, July 1st, this year, 2025 budget will begin.
Thank you.
At the Boardwork Session, dated 16.
Are there any Commissioner comments, changes, additions to the calendar before we put public comment? Sorry, I was going to say, if you're online and you want to comment, please just raise your hand now so that we're ready for it. Yep.
Yes, I do have one comment. I was thinking about this after we met last. I think one thing that is still a bit official here is that we had either a listening session for residents to be able to come and express their priorities as well for the upcoming budget year, or alternatively, if we made sure that we had set public comment time during the two sessions on anticipated revenue and expenses and the capital improvement plan. I just want to be able to provide adequate time and space for residents to also let us know what their priorities are for expenditures or their tax dollars.
So you're saying, just make sure that if we have a work session, that when we're discussing the budget, we allow public comment like we would in a regular meeting?
Yeah, I would say, you know, allow at least a set aside amount of time, whether it's 30 minutes or an hour for anyone, and, you know, of course, advertise as well, and also open, advertise our virtual box for people to be able to, you know, speak, so that we're at least providing the opportunity for anyone who wishes to provide comment.
Then do we, how does everyone feel about adding a listening session, or do we want to dedicate time at a meeting?
That'll create a whole nother meeting. It will be the listening session.
So what we could do is we could advertise the first 30 minutes of February 3rd as a listening session. That way, we, you know, we're meeting anyway.
Yeah, we're over here.
That's right.
Would that work? Yeah. And since we're going to talk about our priorities, that seems like a good time.
Yeah, you said a 30-minute meeting, a listening session?
Before we start talking about the priorities. So we can add that at 10:30 on 3rd, and then I think the second piece, I just want to make sure I'm getting this, is that when there is budget being discussed by a work, during a work session, then the budget specifically will be given a public comment period in the same way regular meetings do. Is everyone good with that?
Yeah. The reason I point that out is because we do have a specified public comment session for proposed town tax rate, but I want to make sure it's also specified out, that, you know, if folks have other comments on revenue and expenses, or in general, or department or VIP, like that they have.
So this session is going to be from 10 to 10:30?
10 to 10:30. Do we want to add that? We should probably add that to the calendar. I'll wrap it up. Yeah, I'll make the motion, or just say. Let's allow public comment at this time. If you are in the room, welcome. You can come up to the podium if you would like to comment on any item, and you'll be given three minutes to comment. If you are online, you'll raise your hand. Are there any hands? Hearing no comment, I will ask, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-01 with the addition of a budget listening session from 10 to 10:30 on Saturday, February 3rd?
No move.
Second? Call the roll.
Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner La.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We will move on to the annual events calendar. And Clark Hostman, could you introduce that for us as well?
The January 16th Boardwork Session, the discussion was had regarding the Town of Marlboro Event Calendar Report. Listed before you are those events, making the changes that you all had requested, moving Marlboro Day, June 8, 2024, from 10 to 3, and then that evening having a movie night at 8:00. Also having, of course, Family Fun Day, barbecue will be August 10th, and movie night followed as well at 8:00. And those were the changes that had been requested, and of course, keeping in mind that community conversations and the farmers markets will also be scheduled, you know.
Can we add to this calendar later on?
So we can, basically what we do is, once this is approved, then to add an event to the calendar has to come before the board, a lot of times because there's overtime costs involved with that. So yeah, things can be added, but we approve it. Any other questions? I'm just going to request two things. First, one, since I contacted folks about different events around October, and I don't have full responses yet, I think it would be best not to publish a date for trunk or treat, just to say October trunk or treat, and we'll kind of TBD that. And with regard to Growing Green with Pride Day, if I can get the date from the county executive office before we publish this, is everyone okay with putting that in? What's the last one you sent in here? The Growing Green with Pride is a county event, and so they'll base, if we do it in conjunction with the county, they will pick up the trash, and then our public works crew doesn't have to pick up and pay to dump the trash. So.
So if it's a county event, what exactly takes place?
So they just ask communities throughout the county to have a community cleanup day.
Oh.
So the town is a community in the county, and so that, you know, we participate, they give us stickers and gloves and the bags, the crews come around and pick up the trash. Sometimes there's even, you know, for communities to do tree planting, I don't know if that'll be available this year, but it was last year. So, public comment? Oh, sorry, chief, go ahead.
So last week, we couldn't really hear, but what about rain dates? What are we doing? The event doesn't happen, or if it rains, or sun, or they're moving?
I think, yes. I think we decided last time, shout out if I'm wrong, guys, that we were not going to have rain dates. It was either rain or shine. If it's too bad, the event's canceled, we're sad about it, but it's, that's what it is.
It's just too much of a headache to try to move it over, and you're spending, you're still spending money. Still spending.
But is that something we should avoid into doing that, so that, you know, there's no discussion later in the year, like how about?
Oh, put on the calendar.
When we put it on the calendar, it'll be listed.
We'll take the bottom.
Yeah. The rain date. Any public comment on this?
Kathy Calathor.
Just a couple of things. Memories and Marshalls Domain is not on here. Will that be able to be added, and will this be put on a calendar?
So Memories and Marshalls will be added if, if in discussions with the historic committee, they want to have that. with the store committee, they want to have that happen. And then also, there will be a calendar. We are debuting a new website. So not only will you have the very nice looking calendar that our town clerk provides, but there will be a calendar on the website with all the dates on it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Joe Herco, Old Water Plate. I believe there was a resolution a few years ago that set the vendor fees for town events that then also stated that all town events had a rain date. You may need to revise that resolution if you're going to be striking rain dates. And I also suggest striking the fixed event fees because every event is different. And especially, you know, I heard from Kathy Anderson that she was having problems trying to get vendors at that rate. And when she's trying to build out an event, it'd be nice to be able to have some flexibility in pricing.
That's the thing I forgot. I kept trying to remember for the rolling agenda. And it is true that there's a resolution we're gonna have to repeal because we're changing Marlboro Day's date. But we'll take care of that in February. We'll bring it up. Yeah, I, John and I were trying to remember what we're supposed to add to the rolling agenda, and we couldn't remember. We got it now. All right. So is there a motion to approve the event calendar with a TBD for trunk or treat, a date for Growing Green with Pride, and a statement that there will be no rain date?
So move.
Is there a second? Let's do that again, both at the same time. Is there a second? Okay.
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Laug.
Aye.
Commissioner Prabhat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Now we will move on to the town meeting schedule. Clerk Hostman, back over to you.
This is the town meeting schedule. It was also discussed on the January 16th boardwork session. We did, you went ahead and made the decision that the Tuesday, June 11th meeting would be the regular town meeting. And the Tuesday, December 10th meeting would be a regular town meeting due to the fact that we will be at MML Summer Conference in June. And of course, Christmas Eve happens to be the night of our regular town meeting. So of course, we want to make changes to that as well. But these are the meetings. And as I stated at the bottom, those are the changes that were made.
Any question? Any comments? Any public comment?
So for decades, the town had its meetings on the second Tuesday rather than before Tuesday, which did not have many, so many conflicts. So I was wondering why it was changed? If it wouldn't make sense to just move back that. Because even, you know, like the third quarter on the cert meeting, you know, in December, well, they've also already had the January cert meeting. You know, by the time you get the report in February, it's like, you know, all the reports are more than a month old.
Anything else? Right. Is there a motion to approve the Town of Upper Marlboro town meeting schedule for 2024?
So move.
There's a second. Could you follow those?
Yes, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Laug.
Aye.
Commissioner Prabhat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We will now move on to the town holiday schedule. Back over to you, Clerk Hostman.
Very well. This is the Town of Upper Marlboro town holiday schedule that was discussed at the January 16th boardwork session. We went ahead and we posted all the holidays. This is more or less follows the French Georgia County holiday schedule. And the only addition that was made by the commissioners was town hall will be opened virtually but closed to walk in during the week of December 23rd to 27th during the holidays. And but phones will be answered from 9:00 to 5:00.
Any questions? Any thing from staff? Any public comment? All right, is there a motion to approve the town holiday schedule for 2024?
So move.
There's a second.
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Laug.
Aye.
Commissioner Prabhat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We will move on to new business, which is the 457B retirement plan. Did just get an answer today to your question last time, and I'll send that to you, the Maryland State Retirement. Clerk Hostman, would you read it into the record?
Will do. Resolution 2024-02, session regular town meeting dated January 23, 2024. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, awarding contract to blank to create a supplemental retirement benefit, 457B plan for town employees.
And you all had the three quotes, or three, they're not really quotes, that the HR firm went out and collected three different pricing plans from three different places. After considering what would be affordable for the town and good for the employees, they are recommending that we go with the T-Roe Price. That's correct, yes, middle one. It is, so it's the least expensive. But it's also one that comes with a, has a investment advisor so that employees can call and get advice on their investments. There are no hidden fees for employees that one of the other plans has. And they also have the, these accounts where, like, you just say when you want to retire, and it recommends a portfolio for you. So those were the main reasons that they recommended T-Roe Price over the other. Any questions?
I'll do. So, right here.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Question? Any comments from staff? All right. Any public comment? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-02? There's a second.
You want to order?
Oh.
Add T-Roe Price?
Oh, 42, sorry. So I am going to propose an amendment to the motion to award the plan contract to T-Roe Price. Is there, is that amendment? There's someone who seconded that amendment.
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Laug.
Aye.
Commissioner Prabhat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. We are on to administrative updates. And we do not really have any, from my end. Is there any, are there any staff members with any administrative updates? You can kind of hold this for last minute stuff that comes up. But I think no last minute stuff has come up this time. So only been a week, so. All right. Then we will move on to public comments. So this is for just general public comment. Anything you want to say can be about the meeting, or it can be about your driveway, or, any questions, comments? Come on up to the podium, and you're here.
I'd like to go too.
So if you can just state your name and street.
Yes. Heaveth Valley, and I am the Greens of Upper Marlboro, sorry, recently. Actually, I just relocated from Charles County to French Georgia. And although I know each county is different, I did notice one thing that particularly brought up interest. And not just me, I think others as well. One thing that I noticed, particularly in our neighborhood, is the trash pickup. The trash pickup comes once a week. We would say animals, rodents, things of that nature is not appeasing, especially in a progressive county. Another thing that I noticed was, was the snow. And correct me if I'm wrong. We did not get the snow piles our first 48 hours of receiving snow. In fact, I'm not even sure when they put the ball down and/or if it was down. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. So I have, I have some bad news for you, which is to the Greens of Upper Marlboro, and actually in the Town of Upper Marlboro. How close is it? Can we annex them? Oh, it's okay, so for that. So the good news is that the town is looking at doing annexation. And how, how, our roads were clear, like the...
During the storm.
During the storm.
Then four hours.
So within four hours, all roads in the Town of, in the Town of Upper Marlboro were clear. I don't know what you're salting. I know you sent a report, but I can't remember because there are too many storms.
Yeah. Depending on the power precipitation. If it's light, it's washed away some. But you do maintain the storm that's going to pass all the time. So, of course, the grid's not bad.
I have just noticed the main roads leading out to the neighborhood is that wasn't there, especially because within that development there was an elementary school there. The kids.
So, yeah, so you'll want to contact Councilwoman Walla Bugley. And she is the District 6 County Councilperson. Her team is super responsive. So you will get good response from her. And, and we are happy to discuss annexation as well. Chief Bur.
Development in HOA.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that will be another.
Oh, to contact HOA. Yeah.
Yeah, so they would have to be the first one. Normally, the HOA contracts a particular company to come in and do the salt, snow, and all of that. So I would start with them because you actually came. You're in HOA, you're doing that service in the, in the winter time and against grass cutting at least in the summer. So I would start with them first, saying, hey, why did it take 48 hours for them to come home?
Now, as far as the trash pickup, was that still a part of the...
So the grasses, depending on...
The county.
It could be the county or it could be an HOA.
So what county exactly did the Greens of, of Marlboro? That's still... Yeah. So that's separate from, that's always just the city council.
Yeah, you know where the bus stop is? The little, the little bus at the end of John Rogers, where the road is closed off with the cones.
The bridge is at the limits of town.
When you go over that little bridge there, then you're in the town. But before that, you're not inside the town. But we're always happy to help direct you. And brag about our public works director and Dean. It is like a bridge. You don't know it's a bridge, but there's like a little bridge underneath it. Oh, okay, right past the bus stop. Right past the bus stop. Okay, oh, we have a resident comment. I kept watching for the hand, I didn't see it, but, okay, yeah.
Kathy?
Hi, yeah, can you give us an update on the old elementary school and the stone building, and also the trails?
So I mentioned that, I mentioned the trails in my report that we had a meeting. I cannot provide any new information on the elementary school or the stone house if nothing's really been happening over the holidays and with the beginning of the legislative session. But those conversations are ongoing.
Okay, and also, okay, and also, where do we report those smells that we're smelling? I've seen, I've smelled them for the last couple of weeks, a day or two during the last couple of weeks.
I'm gonna let Clerk Hostman direct you.
Thanks.
We put it on constant contact every week. We always keep it on there. You can also go to the website, go to the news item, and you can find it in there as well. If you scroll to the news item, you'll see the odor reporting, and you just click on it, and you can go and report your odors.
Okay. I was just wondering if anybody else smelled it, because I smelled it for the last, once last week and once this week.
I smelled it this morning.
Okay.
And actually, you guys can report smells. Okay, all right. Are you done with your, I don't want to cut you off because you still have time.
The only, the only other question I had, the only other question I had was, is there gonna be an ordinance for a budget adjustment? Or are you just gonna move into the, the current budget?
We're currently moving, currently moving into the current budget. There will be a budget adjustment. Things are not moving as quickly as they normally do without a town administrator. So, but we, our accounting firm is working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna let Joe Herco speak. Okay?
Hi, Joe Herco.
Sorry, Joe.
Just wanted to remind everyone that we're still doing board game nights every other Wednesday. The next one is tomorrow night. And people have to get out of rent, so if you want to come out, stay. And we've been trying out some games for younger kids so that way, if, you know, any of them show up, we'll be prepared. Also, there's been some change up in management in the library system. They have recently, I don't know if they've publicly announced it yet, but they had approved a new CEO. And they have changed Upper Marlboro branch. They have this concept of areas with an area manager. And we've now been moved with the southern area as opposed to where we were with, like, grouped with South Bowie and some stuff going to the north. And then also, when you approved the meeting schedule, you would also mention that you might be having a February 3rd morning meeting, which was not in your calendar.
It's a special meeting.
So special meetings are rather significant because a true special meeting, you are allowed to approve ordinances to come into effect earlier. So they're actually rather significant when they have. They don't have the same requirement of the delay between introduction and approval of ordinances, and then how quickly they take effect.
We won't be approving any ordinances. We're simply having a meeting that has different roles so that we can have a more roundtable discussion about goals while still doing that with the public observing.
So you may want to look to see if it is considered a special town meeting or if it is some other type of meeting because declaring a special meeting is rather specific.
Our clerk will announce it properly with the proper wording. So. Right. Is there anyone else? We will move on. So this is the next regular or work session agenda. I just kind of threw some things on here that were, seems to be in line. If there are additional items that we want to address, and maybe, because we did talk about the vendor fees, that might be appropriate to put on to the meeting because it's gonna impact the budget.
We're about changing the Upper Marlboro, Marlboro Day.
The Marlboro Day resolution. Do you think that can be ready? Yeah, oh, yeah, because we're not voting on it at that time. So that'll be fine. Yeah, we're just repealing, we have to repeal it. I'm looking at her. She'll figure out how we do that. She'll figure out how we do that. It basically says like the date and the fee is in. So, okay, so we're going to add that. Anything else? Anyone wants to add or other changes?
So for the record.
Yes.
Business will be, A, the board priorities for discussion, B, budget process discussion for discussion, C, record retention for discussion, and D, property standards for discussion, as well as the Marlboro Day change of date.
And F, vendor fees.
And F, vendor, got you.
That may come back up. It is possible we'll add the Trinity Church agreement back on, but I can just add that on if it's ready. Are we good with this agenda? You can add things, we can't take things away. Okay. Okay, sorry.
Take the whole agenda.
If you start adding too many things, that's. All right. Before we go into closed session, I do just want to reiterate what this February 3rd meeting is. And now that we have added a listening session, invite people to that. So on February 3rd at 10:00 a.m., the Board of Commissioners is going to meet. And the reason we're going to meet is because we have new board members, we're new composition, and we want to talk about what the goals and priorities will be for the year. And that's going to guide the budgeting process because when we're making hard decisions about what can be funded and what can't, what are, keeping our goals in mind is important. So what we have done is we have added 30 minutes to the beginning of that. So from 10:00 to 10:30 for the public to come and provide there, you'll have three minutes to provide your input as to what priorities and goals you think we should consider in the goal setting process. After that, we're going to kind of huddle around the table. You'll be allowed to stay in the room and listen to us deliberate, but it will be a conversation just among the commissioners. Then out of that discussion, we will be talking on February 13th. And then you will have another opportunity to comment on those priorities. So you will definitely have an opportunity to comment on and affect the conversation, but we will actually have a conversation. It's a little different for them. So, that said, we are now proposing to go into closed session. So it is 7:54. And we are proposing to go under, into closed session under general provisions, Article 3-305B1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, and removal, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction and any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. We are proposing to go into this session to discuss the town administrator position. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Is there a second?
Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. La.
Aye.
Mr. Prabhat. Aye.
Motion carries. We're now in closed session.
It's 7:55, we are in closed session. I'm going to call a five-minute recess. Remind everyone, if you want to be a volunteer, you do not have to be a resident, volunteer on our committees or come to most of our events. So we have a training for volunteers on Saturday, January 27th. And an appreciation, if you have volunteered with us over the last year, please sign up so that we can appreciate you because we do appreciate you. And so that is this Saturday. Thank you for joining us. And we will recess for five minutes before we go into closed session.